Good evening. I want to welcome everybody to the July 14 Williamson County Commissioner Meeting. As a reminder, we ask everyone to please silence their cell phones during the duration of the meeting. The first item on the agenda is always the invocation and pledge. It will be delivered tonight by District Six. The invocation to be given by Commissioner Paul Webb, the pledge to be given by Commissioner David O'Neal. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear God of all, we give thanks to the many blessings we have received for our family, our community, and our country. Thank you, dear Lord, for the guidance in offering our prayers to you as found in Matthew six, verses five through fourteen. Lord, we stand here and humbly offer our prayers to you both silently and aloud. In our Redeemer's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next item on the agenda is the roll call. If everyone's already signed in, if, when it pops on your screen, if you'll hit your present button. It's not popping up yet. We don't see it yet.
She sees what she sees, so she knows.
There we go. If, uh, if everyone will hit their present button, and if you'll call the roll, please, Mr. Whitby. I have twenty present, um, three absent, one vacant. Um, absent, I have Commissioner Clifford, Commissioner Petty, and Commissioner Stresser. And we did hear from all three of those, and, uh, they had reasons for not being able to be here tonight. Appreciate that, Mr. Whitby.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. This will be approving the amendments of June ninth Commissioner Meeting, June twentieth Commissioner Meeting, and the special called session of June twentieth. Uh, copies were mailed to each of you. I have a proper motion made by Commissioner Megan Guffey, seconded by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon. Any questions or comments concerning approval of the minutes? I see none. If you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of approving those minutes, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, which we haven't made yet? There we go. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Sturgeon? Here we go. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. And the minutes are approved. Next, we have citizen communications. Uh, our rules allow up to three minutes per individual for a total of thirty minutes. If we have more than ten people sign up, then we start dividing those minutes up. Tonight, we've had one, two, four people sign up. Uh, so each of you will be given three minutes. There should be a clock going, and I will call these out in order in which they were signed in. When you come to the podium, if you would, please state your name and the town in which you live. Uh, and first up is Samantha Ozon, Oza? Hopefully, I'm, there we go.
Okay. My name is Samantha Ozon, and I've lived here in Franklin since 2013. My husband and I have two children, and they have both attended Williamson County Schools. My daughter is heading off to college next month, and my son is at Franklin High School. I am here today to encourage you to please vote and approve a new resolution to submit a waiver petition to the Tennessee Monuments and Memorials Commission to remove the Confederate flag from the Williamson County seal. To me, and probably to many people, the Confederate flag is a symbol of the southern side of the Civil War. The Confederate flag represented the states that wanted to slavery alive and ongoing. Today, the Confederate flag is a symbol of the old ways, in my opinion. As a society, we have evolved and grown, and have come to realize that the Confederate flag is something that divides us. It separates us, and it can feel threatening. For the people in our community who feel that it's oppressive, why would we want to hurt them? Why would we want to exclude them or make them feel unwelcome? And for those people who like the Confederate flag, they have the option to display it on our, on their own property. But it should not be on a place like our seal that represents our county as a whole. As a mom, we want our children to grow up in a safe and welcoming environment. People can have disagreements or opposing few, views, but the Confederate flag has become a symbol, and is generally not recognized as a positive symbol, but more of a negative symbol. It is used to separate and divide our citizens and our neighbors, and I don't feel like that's what we want to teach our children. We all, as parents, strive to teach our children to be kind, to be welcoming, to be friendly, and to include people. We don't want any child to feel left out or excluded. Isn't that how we all want our community to treat us and our fellow citizens? As times have changed, so must we. We must strive to take action where needed to improve our community. We can change with the times. We can make improvements. We need to remove the Confederate seal, flag from our seal.
Thirty seconds.
Please vote and approve the resolution to submit a waiver to remove the Confederate flag. This will bring our county together. We can do better for our fellow citizens and for our children. We can be the positive change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Corey Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Corey Martin. I am the parent of two Williamson County Elementary School daughters, and I'm here also representing a group called One Wilco, and we are working to make Williamson County Schools safer for students of color. Uh, so I'm here to echo a lot of the remarks that, that you just heard from Ms. Ozon. But, uh, tonight, uh, we, as One Wilco, are joining the many voices who are asking for the county commission to honor the commitment that was made in 2020 to remove the Confederate flag from our county seal and take the necessary steps, uh, following the amendment to the Heritage Protection Act. The Confederate flag has long been associated with racism, oppression, and intimidation of African Americans, and its removal would send a powerful message to our black and brown neighbors that they are respected, valued, and fully welcome in our government buildings, in our schools, and in our community. Even institutions like Walmart, Six Flags, NASCAR, they have already recognized the harm caused by the Confederate flag and have chosen to expend the time and energy to remove it from their properties and events. We hope that Williamson County, our community, will join places like South Carolina, and Mississippi, and Alabama in taking the meaningful step to remove the Confederate flag from our civic symbol. This is not about erasing history. It's about creating a new, better future that we can all be proud of. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Dustin Coctor?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dustin Coctor, and I live in Franklin in the tenth district. In September of 2020, this Board of Commissioners passed Resolution nine dash twenty dash eighteen to receive, accept, and adopt the report from the mayor's task force, which came to the unanimous decision that the Confederate flag should be removed from the Williamson County seal. In understanding the vote that took place last month, we see that you've reversed course. This body spent hours debating the issue, considering the historical significance of the Civil War and the Battle of Franklin, while also weighing the uncomfortable truth that the flag on our county seal and the negative message it carries are not representative of Williamson County. The task force's report shows the expanse of support in Williamson County to remove this symbol of white supremacy and racial terror from our seal, and the only group that's taken an official legal position to oppose us is based in Murray County. Additionally, the precedent to remove Confederate symbols in Williamson County has, was previously set by Franklin PD and Brentwood PD decades ago, with no material impacts to the memory of the Civil War, the Battle of Franklin, or US history. As black Americans began to see glimpses of freedom and equality during Reconstruction, the Jim Crow era, and the Civil Rights Movement, our country saw a development and placement of Confederate monuments, memorials, imagery, and branding as part of a coordinated campaign to reframe the cause of the Confederacy. Rather than appropriately putting these symbols only in solemn places of remembrance and reflection, organizations aim there to stake their claim at the hearts of communities by also putting these symbols in places of prominence, and the white majority generally accepted it and built up a tolerance that's lasted generations. This clouded narrative and tolerance of Confederate symbols were widely challenged in 2015 after a Confederate sympathizer and white supremacist murdered nine black worshippers at Emmanuel AME Church in Charleston, South Carolina. Since that time, dozens of Confederate icons throughout the country have been removed or altered. His leadership, Mr. Mosley and his team, as, as have gone through the process required by the Heritage Protection Act, but a recent and targeted amendment to that act by the Republican supermajority in the General Assembly changed the rules and likely puts us back to square one, which we saw last month. I'm asking for your leadership to see this through, to pass a new resolution to submit a waiver petition to the Memorials and Monuments Commission, and to stay the course to do what's right. The facts have not changed since 2020, since 2015, or since 1968, when the county seal was first adopted, as that flag on our county seal has been closely aligned with discrimination, inequality, intimidation, and racial terror, and it's time for it to be removed from our county seal. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, our last, uh, citizen communication is coming from Emily, Ms. Emily Paisley.
Thank you. Um, I was not prepared to speak tonight, but, um, and I don't want that to, uh, reflect on the respect I have for this meeting or for the commission. Um, I, this is something very near and dear to my heart. I am speaking on behalf of this seal, and I do echo everything that was just said. Um, having said that, I think there may be three people in this room that may not be old enough to know exactly what that flag means. When you see that flag, I feel everyone in this room truly understands what somebody is trying to convey, when they put it on their truck, when they fly it in front of their home, when they have it at a protest. I think we all know what it means, and it's, it's a form of keeping somebody to know their place. Okay? My ancestors built Homestead Manor. Um, my aunts lived in the kissing house and Whitehall and Spring Hill. I know the history. I understand history. I appreciate history, and I feel we can learn from history. My three children graduated from Franklin High, and we were in the process and part of the story of changing that mascot. And it means something to people. And nobody was, um, you know, the kids, the kids who were part of the process, they learned why we were changing it, and it was necessary. And we still have throughout this county, um, racial bullying within our schools, within our high schools, and, and probably lower, but I have not, I've talked to some of the principals of middle schools, but, um, it's something that needs to be taken seriously because whatever, wherever, however they, uh, divide districts, um, I think it would carry a lot of weight, and we are sitting in it, and I just think it needs to be seriously considered.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all we have for citizen communications this evening. We'll move on now to communications and messages. Um, we have two proclamations tonight. The first is a proclamation honoring the 2025 Nolansville High School Knights Boys Lacrosse Team. Uh, Commissioners Sanford and Mary Smith.
So we've got two state champions in District Five, so we're gonna start with the Nolansville Knights Boys Lacrosse Team. So thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. I know you had a great season. So here we go. Whereas the Nolansville High School Boys Lacrosse Team won the 2025 Division One double A Boys Lacrosse State Championship at the Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association Championship held at Nolansville High School on Saturday, May seventeenth, 2025. And whereas in a decisive and hard-fought final, the Nolansville Knights triumphed over Franklin High School with a final score of ten to four, displaying extraordinary teamwork, resilience, and athletic excellence. And whereas the Knights also secured an impressive semifinal victory over Farragut High School with a score of fifteen to nine, earning their place in the state championship game. And whereas the 2025 season marks a historic milestone, as the Nolansville Knights became the first ever T double S double A state champions in boys lacrosse TSLA championship title. And whereas the Knights concluded the season with an outstanding fourteen-four record and proudly celebrated eight all-state team selections and fourteen all-region team selections, exemplifying the team's depth of talent and commitment. And whereas the 2025 Nolansville High School Boys Lacrosse Team members and coaches are Bowen Spisland, Lucas Jaeger, Peyton D., Christian Lilias, Henry Howard, Luke Carroll, Spencer Bates, Grayson Wright, Caleb Mullen, Emmett Sekos, sophomores Cole Henninger, Landon Henninger, Ottman Alabadi, Jackson Hicks, Jacob Wang, Murphy Johnson, Gabe Garcia, Keegan Svensson, juniors Mac Baki, Austin Manning, Aaron Sylvester, Noah Parks, Griffin Sebold, Seamus Sekos, Hudson Troopman, Landon Bowman, Walker Garrend, Finley Bro, Andrew Hardwin, Porter Knox, Braden Olson, Ethan Nelson, Carter Tidwell, Zach Henke, and seniors Jake Manning, Nathan Waters, Mason Davis, Dax McNeely, Hayden Gross, Andrew DiMachelli, and Corinne Lanier. Coaches, head coach Tom Pettit, assistant coaches Mike Johnson, Robbie Moore, and Matthew Perez. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session this fourteenth day of July 2025 hereby congratulates the 2025 Nolansville High School Boys Lacrosse Team and recognizes the level of excellence exemplified collectively as a team, and that they be a source of pride and inspiration for the Nolansville community and future Knights athletics. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
And congratulations to each of you.
And next up, we have the Page High School Lady Patriots Lacrosse Team. Other commissioners, Commissioner Herbert, Commissioner Huster, Commissioner Lawrence. Two years in a row for Paige. The boys last year. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for being here. Here we go. Proclamation honoring the 2025 Page High School Lady Patriots Lacrosse Team. Whereas the Page High School Girls Lacrosse Team, known as the Lady Patriots, captured their first-ever Division One A state title at the inaugural Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association Girls Lacrosse Championship, held at Ravenwood High School on Saturday, May seventeenth, 2025. And whereas in a thrilling back-and-forth match, the Lady Patriots And whereas in a thrilling back and forth match, the Lady Patriots defeated Seymour High School with a... ...and athletic excellence. And in the semifinal round, they earned a decisive victory over Centennial High School with a score of 12-4, advancing to the championship with confidence and momentum. And whereas the 2025 season marked several historic milestones for the Lady Patriots, their first appearance in the state finals, their first ever victory over Ensworth High School, seven to six in program history, and a successful campaign during the first year of TSSAA sanctioned girls lacrosse in Tennessee. And whereas the team posted an overall record of 11 wins and seven losses, overcoming numerous challenges and facing many playoff caliber opponents. And whereas individual's excellence was also recognized with the Lady Patriots earning four All-Region Selections, four All-State Selections, and receiving two nominations for the 2024-2025 Middle Tennessee High School Sports Award, as well as one Wilco Awards finalist. And whereas the 2025 Page High School Girls Lacrosse Team members and coaches are freshmen Caroline Kellen, Emery Thompson, Ellie Linton, Stella Milo, Carleen Demura, Remington Remy Todd, Colgan Higgins, Cadence Worrell. Sophomores Blair Forehand, Cameron Cormier, S.J. Johnston, Sophia Sophie Neely, Sophia Gunsick, Brooklyn Driscoll, Savannah Malgahays, Sadie Shields. Juniors Blythe Mingle, Ella Wilson, Kendall Thornton, Kayla Turnage, Annie Gardner, Olivia Beasley. And seniors Madison Newdecker, Noel Smith, Josie Segundo, Lauren McKnight. And Bailey Stompf. Now therefore be it resolved that the Williamson County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session on this 14th day of July 2025 does hereby extend its heartfelt congratulations to the 2025 Page High School Lady Patriots Lacrosse Team on their historic season, championship title, and outstanding representation of Page High School and the Williamson County community. Their success in sportsmanship serves as a source of pride and inspiration to all. Congratulations.
We congratulate both teams for their outstanding accomplishments. All right. Also under communications and messages, we've got some moving or some requests to move some things around in tonight's agenda. Probably first and foremost among those would be in the category of elections and appointments. We do have an election to make to fill a vacancy, and I've had a request to move that up to this portion of the meeting, so that person can take their seat if they so wish and go through the rest of the meeting with us. So if there are no objections, we will now jump ahead to the election of County Commissioner of Third District. I see no objections. This again being the County Commission seat of the Third District fulfilling a four-year term until the next general election. Resigning is Jeff Graves, and the chair now recognizes Commissioner Jennifer Mason.
Thank you. So as everybody here knows, Commissioner Graves resigned at the end of June, or no, end of May, sorry, which left a vacancy in District Three for the duration of the term, which will expire next August. I will say, this has been a very difficult process. For those of you that have been through it, you have my deepest condolences, because it's, it's not something that you take lightly. It's, it's a process where the citizens aren't voting on the, the fulfillment, and so you take it upon yourself to hopefully do what you feel is, is the best by speaking to those interested, talking to people, and trying to make a decision that best represents not only your district but your county. And so through this process, I was very blessed that there were five people in Spring Hill that were actually interested in this nomination. So it was, it was very nice to see that there are people that are still involved and want to be involved in local government. And so I do want to thank all of the individuals that reached out to me, spent time with me, met with me, who I got to know who through this process. And those individuals are Guy Carden, Sarah Cornet, Jim Hagaman, Will Palmeroy, and Leah Upton. And again, I enjoyed speaking with all of them, and to each of them, I, I've spoken to them, I have told them the recommendation or nomination I would make tonight. And that was a very hard process because each of them bring very unique qualities to this position, and it's never easy to put yourself out there and put yourself in a situation to be selected for such a public appointment. And so I just want to publicly thank all of them for their commitment to Spring Hill, their commitment to Williamson County, and for going through this process. So thank you to each of them. To different qualities, and the one that I kept coming back to is I was also appointed to this position. And I remember when I was approached by Matt Milligan, who was the commissioner at the time, who was resigning, and asked if I would be interested, and I told Matt, I said, well, I, I don't know anything about politics. And he said, well, we just need somebody who can make really good logical decisions and who can think really well. And I said, okay, I, I think I can do that. And so that's kind of how I went about this process. There are people that I spoke to had experience in local government, there are people I spoke to who had no experience in local government, but what I really wanted was to make sure somebody was in this spot that could come with fresh eyes without his... And so with that being said, my decision, or what I'm asking this committee, my recommendation is for Guy Carden to fill this seat. I have known him for 20 years. I've worked with him in law enforcement. He's been with the Brentwood Police Department, a longtime resident of Spring Hill. He and I have worked cases before. I know his integrity, I know his thought process, and I think he would do a very good job fulfilling this seat. And so I would ask for each of you to support that appointment, and I would ask that he be appointed to the position. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. So we have a nomination for Guy Walker Carden II. Are there any other nominations to come from this body? Seeing none, if we're ready to vote, we will do this by voice vote. All those in favor of Guy Walker Carden II fulfilling the seat of District Three signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Any against, no? All right, we have a new commissioner and Commissioner District Three, Commissioner Guy Walker Carden. And I believe Rogers Anderson is gonna swear him in now.
I solemnly swear that I will perform the duties of the office, to which I have been elected or appointed, and which I'm about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution. I faithfully perform the office of the County Commission, representing the Third District.
Congratulations, Commissioner Carden.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard. Also under communications and messages, we have four late filed resolutions. If there are no objections, Resolutions 33, 34, 35, and 36 are being asked to be heard this evening. Are there any objections to hearing those? Seeing none, we'll hear those resolutions this evening. We also have one resolution being pulled. Resolution 72528 has been asked to be pulled by the sponsor. We also have a request to move one of the resolutions, Resolution 2536, to the front to accommodate Judge Tom Taylor, who is here representing that resolution. If there are no objections, we'll move Resolution 72528 to the front of the agenda. I see none. That one would be 28. Is that right?
No, it's the very last one.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, Resolution 28 is being pulled. Resolution 36 is the one being, yes, thank you for that correction. Resolution 72536 will be moved to the front of the agenda if there are no objections, and I see none. And then lastly, under communications and messages, the chair recognizes Commissioner Paul Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Williamson County Fair starts in about three weeks, and you have tickets on your desk tonight. I hope you will use them and join us. I know many of you volunteer at the fair. If you're not sure where you want to volunteer, little ones need you now. Go to the website, WilliamsonCountyFair.org, and sign up. We, we need you and everyone else, and we hope that you will attend the fair, August 1st through the 9th. Nine days of fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I also know there's volunteers needed with the, the golf carts and the parking and lots of other opportunities for those who want to help out. It's a wonderful event. I hope you can both attend and help where you can. All right, moving on in the agenda, we now have reports of county offices. Mayor Rogers Anderson.
She's got some things she has to enter into the minutes by the Comptroller's request.
On our agenda for the evening is you will see a copy of your new 2026 budget book. So these have been updated to include all the amendments voted on and approved during the June 20 meeting. There were a few, so it's a little bit thicker this year, but I wanted to make sure everyone had that. It is as you had voted on, so if there's anything that you have questions on or anything that you notice out of place, please do not hesitate to let me know. Many of the resolutions this evening do involve funding of those items that were already discussed and approved during the budget process. This evening, we will be discussing how to fund those, those capital expenditures that were already approved. We also have four resolutions that we are going to be allocating privilege tax funds for this evening. Two are to purchase fire and parks and recreation out of the recreation privilege tax. This will to fund some equipment, some vehicles, and also some maintenance for our, for our county facilities. Those will be this evening as well. Our privilege tax collection for the month of May, we did receive a little over $1.3 million. This has been the average of what we have been receiving for the last couple of months. So you can see while you are going through those privilege tax resolutions and to decide those funding sources, you will see we do have adequate funds in each of those respective allocations. We also will be pulling two of our normal allocations out of privilege tax this evening, one out of adequate school and one out of education privilege tax. These are our normal requisitions, resolutions that we pull annually to help fund our debt service. So those are also be becoming for you this evening. We do have a new one this evening. If you will look at your report, we have education impact fee. For the month of May, we did receive a little over $2 million, and we have to allocate this evening, available for allocation, of $96.9 million. We are asking that we pull and do allocate some education impact fee. If you'll recall, we had a discussion on some bond projects that we had originally allocated back in 2018 and 19. The funding source was actually bond proceeds for those projects. Those were growth projects, and we have gone back with the help of general counsel and bond counsel to identify additional dollars we can pull to help offset the cost and those payments that we will be incurring this year for principal and interest. So that will be before you this evening as well. As Mayor Anderson had mentioned, we do have a couple of things that I need to bring before you as a procedural type process this evening. Williamson County is a member of the state's three-star program, as all of you are aware. There are four requirements, there are many requirements, before that I need to bring to you this evening. One is that the county adopt a debt management policy. This is currently on file with the Comptroller's Office. It is also on our website, but I wanted to make sure that each of you are, are recognized that there is a copy of the debt management policy in your packet this evening for you, again, to review as needed. The policy is to, has not been updated since last year, there's been no changes, but again, this is just for your review to make sure that you are aware we do have a debt policy and what that includes. The other requirement is to acknowledge that an annual cash flow forecast must be prepared and submitted to the Comptroller's Office each year. We do this as part of our process that we issue, that we submit our bid, our budget to the state every year. I have submitted the budget that is in front of you to the state Comptroller's Office, and included in there was a cash flow statement. We also are required to issue a cash flow statement as part of our bond issue. So every time we actually issue a bond after your approval, we do also include one there as well. The third requirement I'd like to bring to your attention is that all county offices require, are required to develop and document a system of internal controls. This is in compliance of TCA Code Section 918102. Every fee office and including the mayor, we have to have a documented system of internal controls so that we can make sure that we are documenting the safeguarding of the county assets. This is also reviewed during our annual financial audit, which we are currently, has begun for the year of 2425. And our final and last requirement I'd like to mention to you this evening is that the county has a functioning audit committee. This is, that meets actually Comptroller's requirements and standards. We actually have an external and an internal audit committee. We did meet on March 27, 2025. The minutes are included, and a list of those individuals on the committee are also included in the memo that's in your packet this evening. The only other thing I have this evening I do want to make sure I report on is this evening you will have the Exxon lease. There has been much discussion on us entering and extending our Exxon lease from a five-year to a nine-year lease. We have been waiting for the Comptroller to give their final steel of approval. I have received the official letter, so that will also come before you this evening. Just wanted to make you aware that that has gone through the proper process, and the Comptroller has signed off for us to move forward. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Riley? I see none. Mayor? Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes everything I need to report. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for the mayor? I see none. Next, under reports of county offices, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Jason Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, commissioners. I do want to specifically thank you for your honoring of those two lacrosse teams. I've mentioned this publicly at our meeting, and I can't remember if I've mentioned it to you, but lacrosse is one of those, I don't know, exemplars of success here in Williamson County in how we work together. Parks and Rec and a lot of our volunteer families over the years got lacrosse going in the county, and eventually it became strong enough statewide for TSSAA to pick it up. And three of the four available state championships were won by Williamson County schools. And you all heard, some of the schools that didn't win the championship were eliminated by Williamson County schools. So I want to specifically thank Parks and Rec and our volunteer programs, it's across the county, for the decade, couple of decades, really, work of getting our students involved in lacrosse. I know we celebrated wrestling recently, so thank you all for celebrating the success of our students. We do have one item on your agenda tonight. It is our annual maintenance capital. It includes maintenance, safety, and some general-purpose capital requests. I know the county commission's budget committee looked at that maybe three months ago, and one of the requests from them was, although this is an annual capital, wait until after the budget is passed, and then Education Committee reviewed it this month, and Budget Committee again as well. And so we'll certainly be open to any questions that you may have. Final piece is, next time you all meet, we will be well into school because you do not meet in August. We're starting school in about three weeks. I know.
Goes by quick. Any questions for Superintendent Golden? I see none.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we have the hospital report, and the chair calls on CEO, Mr. Phil Mazuka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to present. I'm going to do things a little bit out of order today, if it's okay with you. As you know, Mike Genesey, our CFO, retired on Friday, and so with me today, I have our interim CFO, Terry Fowler. Terry's been with, in the healthcare industry for about 40 years. His last 21 years were with community health systems here in town. Mike and I had an opportunity to work with Terry for about three years, and Terry is a fine financial person. Say first.
Good evening, commissioners. I've not presented here before, so just bear with me as I'm going to make a brief report on the hospital for the month of May. Overall, volumes for May were low, which is expected for summer months and similar to last month, but still improving. Net revenue for May was actually better than budget, but we are still experiencing higher employee benefit costs, which has resulted in May net income being slightly lower than budget. Year-to-date, net income continues to be slightly above budget, so we're still doing well there. 0.3 from prior month, and debt coverage ratio is 2.1 compared to prior month of 2.08. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Okay, my report will be brief. From a hospital update standpoint, we recently received two awards from the American Heart Association as part of their Get With the Guidelines program. The first one was coronary artery disease, coronary artery disease and STEMI, which is non-ST elevated myocardial infarction, gold with target type 2 diabetes. Gold is the highest level we can achieve. Coronary artery disease STEMI, silver plus with target type 2 diabetes. This is really a testament to our hospital staff and our medical staff working together to really elevate our cardiology program and improve patient outcomes in our community. Also, we celebrate this month our 10-year anniversary of the opening of the Monroe Carroll Jr. Children's Hospital Vanderbilt at Williamson Medical Center. And remember that our hospital has a 10-bed pediatric inpatient unit and an eight-bed dedicated pediatric. To see a hospital with a dedicated, a community hospital with a dedicated pediatric inpatient unit, and even more rare, to see one with a dedicated pediatric ER. I'm really proud that we offer this service to the community as part of our mission to the community to meet the healthcare needs. We want people to stay within our community for healthcare, and this is one of those things that really help us provide access to pediatric care in the community. And with that, I'm going to introduce our board chair, Bo Butler, who also has an update tonight.
Thanks, Phil. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, for allowing me to come before you tonight with a message from the Board of Trustees. I'm honored to serve as the chair of the board. I've been on the board for about 20 years now. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you for your ongoing support of Williamson Medical Center. We truly appreciate the relationship we have with Williamson County and the county commission. I'd also like to give special thanks to Mayor Rogers Anderson and Commissioners Megan Guffey, Judy Herbert, Paul Webb, and Matt Williams for their service on our board. They provide great representation for this body. Dynamic healthy organizations shape their futures through strategic planning rather than allowing the future to shape them. Nowhere is that statement more true than here in Tennessee currently in the healthcare environment. And because of that, our board is constantly evaluating the short and long-term position of Williamson Health to ensure we're delivering on our mission of providing high-quality, compassionate care to our community. We're working diligently today to make informed strategic decisions to ensure a healthy and favorable future for our patients and staff as our community continues to grow. Mr. Chair, if I might, I'd like to read a letter from the board that we plan on sharing with the community.
Yes, please.
I'd like it to be read here first. For more than 67 years, Williamson Health has been a part of the fabric of Williamson County. We have participated in the birth of thousands of babies, played an integral role in the healing of countless patients, and shared the heartache of families who have lost loved ones. Williamson Health does not just serve this community, we are this community. In our work, the people whose lives we intersect with are not strangers. They're our patients, our friends, family members, colleagues, and neighbors who choose to trust us in some of life's most vulnerable moments. That truth makes our work meaningful, but it also serves as a daily reminder to our board about the important role we play in ensuring our community has access to the highest quality of healthcare for the next 67 years. Because we take this responsibility very seriously, we continuously evaluate Williamson Health's position from both a short and long-term perspective. Over the past several years, many challenges have emerged that place increasing pressure on healthcare organizations, especially independent nonprofits like Williamson Health. These include, among other things, increased staffing issues, inadequate reimbursements from insurance companies such as Medicare, Medicaid, and others, operating costs that are rising at higher rates than revenues, shifts in delivery care models, erosion of high-margin services that help to offset those lower-margin services, and ongoing variability in the regulatory landscape such as the recent legislative restructuring of Tennessee's Certificate of Need program. To ensure that we fully understand all possible options for maximizing our short-term health and our long-term viability, Williamson Health is announcing a comprehensive strategic planning process that includes exploring the pathway to remaining independent while also considering a potential sale through a formal request for proposal process. Armed with insights from an exhaustive process led by respected independent consultants, the board is guided by a deep sense of ethical duty and commitment to act wisely, responsibly, and in the best interests of those who rely on us. And we have determined that we must consider the sale of Williamson Health as one option to ensure the continued excellence and long-term sustainability of care for those we serve, both now and in the future. The goal of the RFP is to determine if there is an organization fully committed to the legacy of Williamson Health and our mission to meet the healthcare needs of our community and our region. This includes a dedication to. areas, as well as making significant investments in every aspect of our healthcare system, including our employees, our medical staff, and the deeply rooted culture we have cultivated over the past 67 years. At the same time, Williamson Health also continues to explore options to remaining an independent entity, including pursuing alternative ways to access capital, thoughtfully considering all paths to preserve and strengthen the organization's future. An RFP will be sent to qualified prospective partners over the next several weeks, and proposals will likely be reviewed by the board in the late fall. If a satisfactory offer is identified that is deemed to be a good fit for the community and a sustainable path to remaining independent does not appear to be viable, Williamson Health may present to the Williamson County Commission for approval a recommendation to sell the system. If the county commission approves the proposal, it must then be presented to and approved by the Tennessee Attorney General and must also be reviewed by the Federal Trade Commission. This process, along with detailed negotiations, could take 12 to 36 months. Any proceeds from a sale would first go toward paying off Williamson Health's debts. Remaining funds would be placed under the stewardship of a newly-formed, independent foundation dedicated to supporting future healthcare needs in our community. This is the exciting part, as the new foundation will be able to invest in and introduce new healthcare initiatives that have not previously been possible, while also having the Williamson Health system continue to thrive through long-term growth and expansion of services. It's important to note that we are currently in the discovery phase, not the determination phase. The only decision made thus far is to consider new ownership as one of our alternatives. As we go through this process, please know that you will continue to receive the same level of exceptional care you've come to expect from Williamson Health. We have a tremendous medical team and staff, and their dedication to our patients is unwavering. In closing, please understand that this decision to explore all options is not about the current financial strength and standing of Williamson Health. We're in great shape today. This decision is about our future and our long-term prognosis in an increasingly challenging and ever-evolving healthcare environment. The Williamson Health Board of Trustees unanimously prefers to remain independent, and fiduciary responsibility requires us to look beyond personal preference and focus on what will best preserve and strengthen our mission and our deep commitment to our employees, medical staff, and community, not only for today but for generations to come. So as outlined in this letter, a comprehensive strategic planning process will include the creation of an RFP that will be sent to potential suitors in the coming weeks. The board, including the four commissioners and Mayor Anderson, will oversee the RFP process. I want to make it clear that the board did not vote to sell the hospital. We are fulfilling our responsibility to explore all options for the long-term viability of providing healthcare to our community. If it's determined that a sale is the right path forward, and if we believe we have found a partner that is committed to continuing the mission and legacy of Williamson Health, we will present a recommendation to you, the county commission. This process could take 12 to 36 months to complete any transaction, as I said before. I also want you to know, this is an action taken by the Williamson Health Board of Trustees, not the leadership team. Entertaining an RFP process is a decision our board did not take lightly and is solely driven by the responsibility we have to our patients, employees, and medical staff to ensure Williamson Health is able to care for this community for years to come. I realize this news may take some time to process for some of you, as some of you feel as connected to Williamson Health as we do. But Phil and I, as well as Jeff Mosley, are here to happy to answer any questions you might have tonight, and also would be available for individual meetings or calls or whatever you might want to do as you've thought about this for a few days. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we're able to take questions if you feel this is the right time.
Any questions for Mr. Butler or Mr. Mazuka? First one comes from Commissioner Richards.
Mr. Butler, where's this letter going to be posted? So if I have questions, I can point people in the right direction.
We have a website that's going to go online in the morning or tonight? Tonight. Tonight.
Can I find it from your homepage?
Yes, if you go to our homepage, they're going to found us, Board of Trustees will be right there. We're also going to submit it for the press release to the media.
There will be other documents there as well to help provide some background information.
Do you want to just repeat that so everybody can hear?
Yes, so I'm Michelle Simpson. I'm the Chief Marketing and Communications Officer for Williamson Health, and shortly after this meeting, we will be issuing a series of communications. The first is going to be up on the website. We will have this letter, a press release, an FAQ. We've tried to think through as many questions that we might get. So we will have that up, we will issue to the media and also to our employees. We're going to start sending messages.
Okay.
So you'll be able to access it shortly.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, I have a question from Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes, I guess this one's for Phil. Phil, this is quite a surprise to a lot of us tonight, and I guess my question is, there's a lot of content in the new congressional bill that was just passed regarding healthcare. How much of that had a bearing on this decision?
I think, you know, I just want to reiterate one more time, the decision was to pursue a comprehensive strategic process that covers all aspects, and so there's been no decision to do anything other than to pursue this process. There's a lot of moving parts, as you know, in the healthcare industry. One of those is the big, beautiful bill that will have, at this point, a trillion-dollar impact on Medicaid over a period of 10 years. I was reading an article today, there are congressmen that want to dig deeper into Medicare and Medicaid in the fall with new bills being introduced that will cut Medicare and Medicaid even more. I think that the bill today cuts Medicaid. It could impact in the state of Tennessee between 68,000 and 170,000 people that have marketplace insurance through the ACA program. It probably will impact rural areas more than non-rural areas, so there is, that's part of the legislative issues that healthcare in general has to deal with, but it's just a myriad of things that we have to think about. You know, we need to be more aggressive of putting more physicians into our community. I know it takes sometimes months to get to see a doctor in our community. Well, for us as a single standalone entity, we can add a couple doctors a year. We could afford to do that, but really, we should be looking at sizable numbers of physicians coming into this area to support the community. Capital things like you're seeing elsewhere in this, in our region with freestanding ERs, ambulatory surgery centers, and those types of things. These are things that require capital, so it's not just, you know, the legislative things that are going on, it's also the opportunities that we need to do in our community to continue to really serve this community in a way we want to. We have a great organization, we have great staff, we have incredible outcomes, but to me, we really need to invest even more into this community as this community grows. And so there's a lot of things that impact this decision, and again, we're looking at all opportunities that may come out of this. It's not just, do we sell? It's what can we do so that we can achieve really the strategic opportunities that we have in front of us to continue to meet the needs of the community in the ways we have done in the past? But that, the big, beautiful bill will have impact on all healthcare providers. I read another article today that said at least 30% of healthcare providers today are doing things in preparation of the bill through layoffs, restructuring, reducing services, things like that. We're not contemplating that today. You know, we're in a position where we continue to provide all the services we provide, we can continue to support the staff that we have, but there are organizations out there, even locally in this region, that have announced some major layoffs because of what's going on with this legislation.
Have a question or comment from Commissioner Steve Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. More of a comment.
More of a comment. In the years since I've been a county commissioner, about twenty years now, at least twice, I've fought, along with many of you, to keep Williamson Medical a private community asset, and this is a difficult and surprising day for me, but I understand the regulatory impact, I know the economic situation, I trust the Board of Trustees. And I always said during those fights, that if the hospital board comes to the commission with a recommendation, whatever it is, I will support that, and I will support them in their strategic planning process. So, thank you.
Any other questions for either Mr. Butler or Mr. Mazuka? I see none. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any other department heads wishing to report at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda to elections and appointments. First election appointment under county mayor is for Water and Wastewater Authority. This is a commerce representative of five-year term, expiring seven of thirty. Terms expiring is Mr. Jerry Rainey. Nomination is Mr. Jerry Rainey. I've got a, looking for a proper motion. What is this voting on? Oh, it's already got the vote up. I'll take a voice motion in a second. Motion made by Commissioner Sanford, seconded by Commissioner Tonac Cliff. Any questions or comments on the nomination? I see none. If you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the nomination, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty yes.
One abstain. Nomination is approved. Next, we have the Industrial Development Board, this under county commission. Industrial Development Board filling an unexpired six-year term, expiring in three of twenty-six. Term resigning is Burgess Oliver, and the nomination is Brandon Oliver. I've got a proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Any questions or comments on this nomination?
But do we know who nominated Mr. Oliver? Just curious. It's not on there. I do like his resume, though.
I think Mayor Roger Sanderson might be able to give some insight there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. His name was brought to us. As you will notice, this is the son of Mr. Oliver who was stepping down, and we interviewed him, the industrial board, legal side also engaged him, so he stepped forward, but his name forward. Thus, it came through me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the nomination? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the nomination, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Sanford and O'Neill? This is not working. Nomination is approved. And then we have medical examiner, this is a five-year term, expiring July of 2030. Term expiring is Dr. Samuel Smith, and nomination is Dr. Samuel Smith. I have a proper motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes, seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. Any questions or comments on this nomination? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Nomination is approved. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Drew Torres. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Guffey? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
And the consent agenda is approved. We have no unfinished business and no zoning, so we will move on now to appropriations. Oh, well, that's our first. No, he's not, that's right, so under other. So, yeah, we moved, the first resolution is the one we decided to move up to the front, and that is actually under other. That is late filed Resolution 72536, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Franklin Recovery Center. I have a proper motion made by Commissioner Tom Tonac Cliff, seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Any questions or comments on the resolution? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Guffey? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Next, under appropriations is Resolution 7251, Resolution requesting an intent to fund for fourteen million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred, one hundred and thirty-five, eight hundred thousand for the Williamson County Board of Education, twenty-five, twenty-six capital needs. Proper motion made by Commissioner Lisa Hayes, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. School board was ten in favor, zero against, with two abstentions. Education committee was five in favor, zero against. Budget committee was three in favor, zero against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Aiello.
I guess this resolution is for the to fund fourteen million, I don't think my mic, do you want this mic? Fourteen million, one thirty-five, eight hundred for capital needs. I believe Golden can address it further if needed.
Okay. Any questions or comments? There it is. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty yes, one abstain.
Resolution passes. Next is Resolution 7252, Resolution amending the twenty-five, twenty-six capital projects budget and appropriating up to four million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for major corridor study projects and the purchase of new equipment. Revenues to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Highway commission was three, four, zero against. Budget committee was three, four, zero against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is for the Sneed Road Bridge, some equipment for the highway department, and it comes out of their fund balance.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7253, Resolution authorizing a transfer within the twenty-five, twenty-six Williamson County Juvenile Services budget of sixty thousand dollars and authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract with youth villages to provide behavioral services. Proper motion made by Commissioner Megan Guffey and seconded by Commissioner Paul Webb. Human Resources Committee was five, four, zero against. Law enforcement was five, four, zero against. Budget committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Webb.
As you'll notice in the resolution, the juvenile services have had difficulty in filling this position, so they have made the agreement with youth villages, and note there's no new money involved. If we have any questions, Judge Guffey is willing.
More for Mr. Mosley, I think. We have kind of a pattern here in the county commission, from what I see. Am I correct in my assumption that it's basically we're writing a blank check for the mayor's office when we do that?
You're approving the material terms for the contract. You have the length of time, you have the amount of the salary, and you can't go over the sixty thousand dollars that is appropriated, so I'm not sure how that would be a blank check.
Well, there's a lot of other things in a contract, aren't there?
Yes, there would be. You're correct.
I just, would this raise any red flags with the comptroller's office?
You'd have to ask the comptroller's office.
Okay, thank you.
Question or comment from Commissioner Lisa Hayes?
Well, that's similar to what my question was about, is I had asked earlier for a copy of the contract, just because, again, I represent my constituents, I'd like to be able to know what's in the contract. I don't, and then I was told it kind of already existed, but it's being renewed, so I just, my question is, again, why don't we have a contract to look at?
I don't know the status of that, quite honestly. I'm not working on that issue.
Okay, so in the future, preferably, I would like to see a contract before I'm asked to vote on it. Thank you.
Well noted.
Commissioner, I do have a copy of the contract in front of me. I apologize that it wasn't in your packet. If you have any specific questions about it, I'm happy to answer.
No, I'd just like to see, and I emailed earlier, and
I guess somebody talked with Bobby, and Bobby was notified her it was being drafted. So, again, said, hey, can I get a copy? So, I didn't know you were involved. I was told Bobby Cook was involved, so I don't know. I just would like to see it prior to standing here, where I'm like on the spot. I like to digest things, so.
I understand.
Respectfully, in the future, I'd like to see it at least forty-eight hours, because, you know, things happen.
I understand. We'll do our best to do that in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of the resolution, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Seventeen yes, four abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7254, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into the Parent Education and Mediation Fund Grant Contract with the State of Tennessee Administrative Office of the Courts and amending the twenty-five, twenty-six juvenile court budget by two thousand dollars. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Herbert and seconded by Commissioner Guffey. Law enforcement was four, four, zero against. Budget committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is a grant to provide mediation services to families. Juvenile services had this grant for the last fifteen years, and there are no matching funds.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 255, Resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-five, twenty-six Circuit Court Clerk's budget by fifty thousand dollars. Revenues to come from reserve account. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Budget committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is to purchase equipment for the Circuit Court Clerk's office, and it'll be paid from filing fees.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7256, Resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-five, twenty-six Register of Deeds budget by one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. Revenues to come from document recording fees. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon and seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. Budget committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is for equipment and part-time pay for the Register of Deeds office, and it will be paid with the recording fee they charge.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7257, Resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-five, twenty-six Health Department budget by seven thousand dollars. Revenues to come from donations. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Public Health Committee did not have a quorum this month. Budget committee was four, four, zero against as amended. Explanation, please. Commissioner Herbert.
This is the Health Department's big backpack giveaway that's funded by the United Way of Middle Tennessee, some churches, civic organizations, and business, also Williamson Health. I did want to amend this to ten thousand instead of the seven in the whole resolution, wherever that's mentioned, for a total, due to some of these contributed at a later date than this resolution was done, so I'd like to do a motion for that, to amend the resolution.
I have a proper motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Guffey, or maybe a few others. Any questions or comments on the motion to amend the amount to ten thousand dollars? And again, this is based, like Commissioner Herbert said, on some additional donations. If it's loaded and you're ready to vote, this, again, will be voting on the amendment. If you're in favor of the amendment, once it pops up onto your screen, if you're in favor of it, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
The amendment passes, and we are on now to the main motion for the Resolution 7257, again, Resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-five, twenty-six Health Department budget now by ten thousand dollars. Revenues to come from donations. Any questions or comments on the resolution itself? As amended. Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Once it pops up. No, I got you. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Sanford and O'Neill? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 7258, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the town of Thompson Station for the provision of an administrative fire captain and amending the twenty-five, twenty-six public safety budget and unappropriated county general fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith and seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Human Resources Committee was four, four, zero against. Law enforcement was five, four, zero against. Budget committee was four, four, zero against as amended. Explanation, please. Commissioner Hester.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our opportunity to increase our fire protection for the township of Thompson Station, and there are many areas there in Thompson Station that are not incorporated into the town of Thompson Station. So this is for, this will help our fire prevention, our active firefighting, and this fire captain will serve the entire county, not just Thompson Station. We need to address the amendment. The amendment would decrease the amount by five hundred dollars. The medical insurance would be decreased, and the total would be three hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second to that.
All right, I've got a proper motion and seconded by Commissioner Herbert. Any questions or comments on the motion to amend? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, once it's loaded and you're in favor of the amendment, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes, which brings us back to the main resolution. And then, are there any questions or comments on the main resolution? It looks like I have one from Commissioner Sanford.
My question's for Connor Scott. Hey, Connor, quick question. So just so I'm clear, the total cost, three hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, thirty-three cents. They want us to pay, I'm just going to use even math, two hundred and forty thousand dollars in Thompson Station, pay sixty thousand, is that correct?
That's correct. The deal we've worked with them is for them to pay half of salary and benefits, and we would cover equipment, of which the bulk of that, of course, is a vehicle. It'll be a county-owned vehicle that we can move around our vehicle, it'll be a county-owned vehicle that we can move around our fleet as needed, and it just made sense that it be a county purchase.
With other Tahoe or pickup truck, I presume. In my opinion, they need to start paying some more money. I think $60,000 towards this position is ludicrous, and it needs to come up, so Thompson Station, you need to start paying your fair share.
I will mention, sir, if you don't mind, in our negotiations with Thompson Station, they were in agreement of funding also half of a position to go to the new Burwood Station, Station 25, that should be built in the coming year or so, they were interested in funding half of that person as well, and they are also contributing towards dispatch fees up for 911 for the first time this year. So, they have come to the table willing to negotiate and have done that in good faith from, from my perspective.
As they should, since they put a burden on the system, so...
Got a couple more questions on the board, if you don't mind staying at the podium in case they are...
Quick question, so, they're, they're paying 50% of what dollar amount in this resolution, the 60,000 or the 300?
They're paying half of the salary and benefits, so all of the one-time costs and then things that are ongoing, such as...
Like Social Security, Medicare, retirement line?
Correct.
Yeah, I have to concur with Commissioner Sanford, they need to step up and pay a little more money, because they're a pretty big town, and they're growing very fast, and they are in my district, so, this is pretty expensive, but we currently, this person's currently covering this anyway, it's just we're getting a cost share.
So this will be a new position, currently, we have a fire captain at Station 24 on Goose Creek Bypass, which is the next closest fire, county fire captain, that's located towards the station.
So this is...
And, and as Commissioner Hester noted, do want to make sure you all know that while this individual will be stationed and working out of Station 23 on Thompson Station Road, they'll respond to fire calls, medical calls across the whole county, and each of our fire captains also has an area of expertise or specialization, so we have one that does training, one that does recruitment, one that does vehicle maintenance, so this captain will have an area of expertise that they're assigned that benefits the whole system, not just Thompson Station, so, even if the town were to come to us and say they wanted to pay 100% of the salary, it would still make sense for the county to cover some portion since there is a significant percentage that's benefiting the entire system.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Paul Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In HR, I voted against this one because of my concern, again, if you heard me say more and more, fair and equitable. At this point, the unincorporated county, Williamson County, is more and more becoming urban, and that's a problem, how do we fund public safety? The sheriff wants to patrol the subdivisions that are growing up, whether it's Stevens Valley, or, you know, something happening in College Grove, wherever. Our county is becoming more and more urban, I kind of see it like Fulton-Ducap County in Georgia. But it's not fair to those that represent districts inside the city limits, mine is totally inside the city limits, all of us represent some portion of city limits, so those folks are paying their $1.30, which funds the countywide fire departments, also funds law enforcement for patrol. On the city side, we also pay city property taxes, and in Franklin and Brentwood, as much as 50% of the city property taxes, or city operating budget, rather, goes to public safety, fire and police. So I think this is a problem we've got to look at. How much longer will these subdivisions, you know, exploding in the unincorporated county, can we expect our city property owners to subsidize the county? I mean, I saw a house today that sold for 1.2 million in Stevens Valley, okay, some houses in Brent Haven, in my district, were selling for 800,000. To make it more fair and equitable for the unincorporated folks to contribute to public safety. Now, I'm not saying cut, we could say today's the baseline, the 2526 budget's the baseline, and then add something, which the law, I don't think state law allows us to do this for law enforcement, but we ought to look at it. The folks in these unincorporated areas, these subdivisions, many of them probably don't know they're not in the city limits, Mr. Chair, and they're going to come to expect public safety coverage, fire coverage, police coverage. And for those of you that haven't heard, when I moved to Brentwood 40 some odd years ago, I gladly paid the fee for a private fire company, because I knew the importance of having a fire company come and try to save my house and keep the fire, the fire hydrants up and down, and so I think if you gave the people in the unincorporated county and say, "Would you pay a little more on your property tax, so that you could have the fire and police services that you expect?", and I think they would. But I think we've got to come to a point where we're going to explain to those that live in the city, like my district, why are we subsidizing this? I don't, I don't see the reason. Now, we can't do this today, but we need to start thinking about how to properly fund public safety in the unincorporated area. So I will vote against it to make that point. It's not against Thompson Station particularly, even though I agree they need to step up, but it's against our, the way that we fund the unincorporated public safety services. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sanford.
I concur with Commissioner Webb on what he said. Connor, when's it, when's the county ever gonna agree or disagree? Are we in the fire business, or are we not in the fire business? Can you answer that?
Well, I will say that Mayor Anderson and I plan to bring an update on the fire service to, to this commission, either at the September or October meeting, depending on what else is on the agenda, but we'll be about a year out from the release of the Public Safety Task Force report, so we felt that would be a good time to start building on these conversations and bring to you all an update on where we are in terms of all of our performance metrics that we look at across the system, and start thinking about that strategic plan, and make sure we're following the recommendations of the task force while looking at what other options are on the table, and what has changed since then, as you know, the fire service and the needs of the county are evolving and changing every day, so it's something that we need to take a closer look at, and I think that you and Commissioner Webb are right, that this is a good jumping off point to, to reignite, if you will, that conversation.
And I thank you for that. My only problem with that is, right, that, that report that came out, it was a sham, it, it wasn't what was accurately discussed in those meetings, and it was brought to several people's attention, but the report came out anyway. Very, very unfortunate that the, the report wasn't accurate. You know, I spent a lot of time on that task force, and it's just unfortunate, so I don't like hearing about the, the report that's going to come out, right? We're following that report, because we didn't follow the report to begin with, because it's inaccurate, so, thank you for your time.
Sir.
Any other questions or comments? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
If you're ready to vote on Resolution 725-8 as amended, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Seventeen yes, four no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-9, resolution appropriating and amending the 2526 Capital Projects Budget by $639,600 for the purchase of fire equipment, revenues to come from fire protection privileged tax funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Megan Guffey, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. The Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
Okay, this is for an EMS vehicle and an ambulance, and it will be paid with the privilege tax.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Next resolution, Resolution 725-10, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Agriculture on behalf of the Williamson County Animal Center and appropriating and amending the 2526 Animal Center Budget by $1,300. Revenues to come from grant funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Judy Herbert. Public Health Committee did not meet, and Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is a State of Tennessee grant that's gotten from the license plate sales, and is for the sterilization of dogs and cats at animal control.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time.
It's not there for everyone? There it is.
All right, record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-11, resolution appropriating and amending the 2526 library budget by $29,039.75. Revenues to come from donations and contributions. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon and seconded by Commissioner Paul Webb. Library Board was 7-4-0 against, Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and also congratulations as the newest member of the Williamson County Library Board. You'll have a good time. This revenue, most of this revenue is from the city of Franklin, it makes a quarterly donation, and others from, and then from other groups, which will be used, as you can see here, for media and other supplies at the library.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-12, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation and amending the 2526 solid waste budget by $339,125. Revenues to come from grant funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon and seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. The Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is a State of Tennessee Waste Reduction Grant, and it will fund the purchase of two roll-off trucks. The grant only covers 50%, and the remaining 50% will come at the solid waste funds.
Any questions or comments? Question from Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, I have a question for Mac. Hopefully, this is an easy question.
I was behaving, I promise.
Is my, is it my understanding that the two roll-off trucks were in the projections for what solid waste was going to have to acquire regardless?
Yes.
And so the fact that we're paying 50% is actually a 50% savings?
That's right.
Because we were going to have to purchase them at 100% ourselves?
Beth Lawthers went to a meeting with, for grants through TDEC, and I got a phone call, what we got in the budgets, I told her what we had in the budgets, she applied for all of it, which was within well over a million dollars, and she got what she got, so she helped us out, so...
So this is actually a $339,000 savings to the county?
Yes.
Fair enough. Pretty good deal.
If, if the trucks cost that much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I see one from Commissioner Lawrence.
Yeah, just want to underscore the name Beth Lawthers, her name comes up a lot around here, but man, is she doing a great job finding these grants and getting this money in the door for us, so thank you, Beth, for all you do for the county.
Indeed, indeed, former Commissioner Beth Lawthers has done very well by the county with these grants. Any other questions or comments? I see none. With that, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor of Resolution 725-12, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-13, resolution appropriating and amending the 2526 Capital Projects Budget by $550,000 for the purchase of various parks and recreation equipment and flooring. Revenues to come from recreation privileged tax funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith and seconded by Commissioner Judy Herbert. The...
This is for fitness equipment, flooring, equipment at the rec centers, and it will be paid with the privilege tax funds.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-14, resolution accepting a donation from Humane Society of the United States and appropriating and amending the 2526 Animal Centers Budget by $4,125. Revenues to come from donations. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres, seconded by Commissioner Ricky Jones. Public Health Committee did not have a quorum, Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
It is a donation from the Humane Society of the United States, and it's for medical and drug expenses for the animal control due to the hurricane relief efforts.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-15, resolution accepting a donation from the estate of Beverly Roberts and appropriating and amending the 2526 Animal Center Budget by $50,000. Revenues to come from donations. And we want to thank the estate of Beverly Roberts. The proper motion comes in from Commissioner Drew Torres and seconded by Commissioner Tom Tonacliff. The Public Health Committee did not have a quorum, Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is a donation from the state of Beverly Roberts, and it is for, they're going to use that for a veterinarian blood analyzing machine, and it will save them from having to pay for services outside, and we want to thank the family, again, of...
Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-16, resolution appropriating and amending the 2526 Capital Project Budget, Capital Project Budget by $2,411,556. Revenues to come from unappropriated solid waste sanitation fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith and seconded by Commissioner Greg Sanford. The Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is the solid waste capital project budget for, I mean, requests for equipment and repairs, and it will be paid for out of their fund balance.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-17, resolution appropriating $5 million in adequate school facilities privileged tax funds and appropriating the related operating transfer for 2526 general debt service expenditures. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon and seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is, we're taking the privilege tax and paying $5 million toward the general debt service.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-18, resolution appropriating $5,687, $687,300 in education impact fee funds and approving the related operating transfer for the 2526 general and rural debt service expenditures. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon, seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is using the education impact fee funds to pay on the rural debt, this is money was back when we started the education impact fee, that they were under appeal and hadn't been able to use, but they were, Phoebe has determined that they could be used now, so we're using it to pay on our debt.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-19, resolution appropriating $5,500,000 in education privileged tax funds and appropriating the related operating transfer for the 2526 rural debt service expenditures. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon and seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is, once again, where we're using privileged tax funds to pay on our rural debt.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Torres?
All right.
Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 725-20, resolution appropriating and amending the 2526 Capital Projects Budget by $11,600,000. and amending the twenty-five, twenty-six capital projects budget by eleven million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Revenues to come from county general fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. The Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is the capital request for the county, and there will be deducted from the county general fund balance. I just want to remind everybody next year, we probably won't have this money where we voted to budget at ninety-four percent instead of ninety-two. We will probably have, if we have these capital requests next year, we'll probably have to borrow the money then.
I have a question or comment from Commissioner Lisa Hayes.
I should have asked this last year, so I'll ask it this year. Is there a reason that we don't break these down and vote on each department, and we just kind of bundle it together? Is there a specific reason why we do that? Anybody answer that? I don't know who to direct that to. Anybody want to take it?
Call on Ms. Phoebe Riley.
Because it's a pretty diverse list.
I don't know if I have a great question or answer for you. Historically, we have consolidated this. Instead of having fifty different resolutions, I've been looked at individually at that time, and they have been individually discussed for each department and each department's committee. This is just actually consolidating, so you don't, you will have eighteen different papers to go through.
Okay. Thank you.
And I believe that Commissioner can make a motion to partition any particular line item that they wish to talk about specifically or have voted on separately. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty yes, one abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven, twenty-five, twenty-one. Resolution amending the twenty-five, twenty-six Williamson County Sheriff's Office budget by five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. Revenues to come from grant funds. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres and seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. The Human Resources Committee was four, four, one against. Law Enforcement was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Webb.
Mr. Chair, we have spoken about this grant before. What this does is bring this grant down to the current year's amount of the five hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. You've had the sheriff explain what it's going to do at prior meetings, but he is here as well as Ms. Riley, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Twenty-one yes passes. Late filed Resolution seven, twenty-five, thirty-three. Resolution appropriating and amending the twenty-five, twenty-six county clerk's budget by fifty thousand dollars for equipment and maintenance costs. Revenues to come from filing fees. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres and seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Webb.
I think you can see this is where the county clerk's office has extra income, and so there's some of that on updating equipment and their maintenance and repairs. And of course, County Corf Whitby is here if you have any specific questions.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution seven, twenty-five, thirty-four. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a twenty-five, twenty-six contractual agreement with the State of Tennessee for local health services and increasing the twenty-five, twenty-six Health Department operations and revenues budget. Proper motion made by... Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is simply, the state has increased the amount by twelve thousand dollars for the grant to bring up to this total of one million, two seventy-nine, five hundred.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution seven, twenty-five, thirty-five. Resolution amending the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund balance and authorizing and approving an amendment to the master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc., for the lease purchase of body cameras, interview room cameras, tasers, and related software for the sheriff's office. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general fund balance. Proper motion made by Commissioner David O'Neil, seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. The Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can see in the heading, this is telling you what the equipment is for. As noted also, the controller, because this is lease financing, will increase our debt, has approved this method of paying at an annual cost, you'll see down here, of two million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and twelve cents of the total, twenty-one million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Now, we're on to other. Resolution seven, twenty-five, twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a contract with Humphreys County, Tennessee, on behalf of the Juvenile Court of Williamson County to house juveniles in the Williamson County Juvenile Detention Center. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith and seconded by...
But they, when juvenile services increased it to two hundred, they asked for a new contract for the new increased amount.
I have a question or comment from Commissioner Sturgeon.
I'll tee if you would check. Everyone's iPad just went blank while she's making her question. Sorry for the interruption.
Okay. The first contract that we've done for juvenile services, and I'd like to know, when we sized what we needed for the new juvenile jail, was this part of the calculation that we're housing several other entities, juveniles? I guess this is a question for the sheriff.
It's for Judge Goffey.
No, Judge Goffey, okay.
Judge Goffey, please.
That's true.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. The short answer is, yes, we did factor that into the number of beds.
Can you tell me what percent is, is factored in?
Commissioner, I can't give you a specific percentage.
Well, how about a, a, a specific percentage?
What I will tell you is, we have twelve beds now. We, we will house a contract child only if we have the availability. And so, we're only talking about perhaps two beds at most, if we're not five or six, at, at capacity of five or six.
That's the current situation, but I'm talking about what we estimated for the new...
Projected out over a number of years, the increase in population and youth.
Right. So, we're paying for a bigger juvenile justice center so that we can house these juveniles from other counties and other cities?
No. No.
No. Well, you said we estimate, when we estimated the size required, that we included stuff like this.
But we would only house those youth if we had the capacity to. We're not relying on that for our detention center.
Right, but the capacity that we calculated, either it did or it didn't take into account the fact that we were going to house children outside of our county.
That is a statistician question, and I'm sorry...
Okay, well, I'm probably going to vote no for the first time on one of these because I just don't think we should be building a bigger jail so that we can take care of the rest of the state.
I certainly agree.
Or detention center. I shouldn't have called it a jail. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I certainly agree with that, and I don't believe that's what we're doing.
Well, until I find out otherwise.
Sure.
Thanks. Thank you.
Commissioner Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge Goffey, if I understand what you have said before is that the State of Tennessee requires us to help other counties. Not every county has a juvenile detention center. Could you help us understand about Humphreys County, please?
So, so the law, the statute does, does allow for those counties that have detention centers to contract with other counties that do not. There, there are only twenty-three counties out of ninety-five that actually have detention centers, and the sizes vary from four beds to over a hundred beds.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Question or comment from Commissioner Richards?
So, just clarification, does the law require us to help other counties?
No, it allows for us to do so.
All right. Thank you.
Judge Goffey, just for my own edification, the new juvenile center was built, I am guessing, correct me if I'm wrong, based on population growth, these beds, I think you stated, I just want to clarify, will not be used for other juveniles from other counties unless they are vacant, in which case their vacancy will allow us to not only help another county but make these additional funds from doing so.
That's absolutely correct, and, and I'll get some information for Commissioner Sturgeon based on the master plan that was developed. I just don't have it with me tonight, and it is, you know, it's fairly complex, but, but I'm happy to get that for you.
Yeah, please.
No, I, I understand, we get first dibs on all those beds, and nobody else gets them if we need them. I just wanted to understand if we are sizing the new maximum size of the juvenile detention center with, okay, we need to make sure it's ten, ten percent bigger because we're, we're going to take on other, other children in the state.
A legitimate concern, and I, I agree. That's not, that, I, I didn't want to do that, and that's not what we're doing. Let me remind you, too, seven months ago, we were at capacity with no other children other than those youth held for offenses committed in this county, and we had to house youth in another county paying two hundred dollars a day. And so...
That's why we're building a new one.
That's why, that's why we're building. That's one of the reasons. It's not the reason. It's only one reason.
Fair enough.
Any other questions or comments? I see none. Thank you, Judge Goffey. With that, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote.
One abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven, twenty-five, twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the City of Franklin for acceptance of physical weightlifting and exercise equipment. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. What was the Property Committee on this one? Property Committee was five, zero. Law Enforcement was four, zero. Explanation please, Commissioner Hayes.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. An interlocal agreement with the City of Franklin for acceptance of physical weightlifting and exercise equipment. The sheriff has agreed to use the equipment for public purpose, and, you know, Kevin, I don't know if you want to provide, if anybody has any questions for you, provide any more context, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven, twenty-five, twenty-four. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration Strategic Technology Solutions for cybersecurity resources. Proper motion made by Commissioner Tom Tonacliff and seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. Proper motion, or I'm sorry, Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is for a contract with the State of Tennessee for endpoint detection response licenses for the county. It does not require matching funds, but the grant will be worth eighty-six thousand.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven, twenty-five, twenty-six. Resolution accepting a donation from Boy Scout Troop Number Two-Ninety-Eight located in the town of Nolansville to refurbish the historical markers and flag poles, as well as construction and donation of a public bench. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon and seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. Property Committee was six, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Hayes.
Yes, we're certainly happy to accept this donation and, from the Boy Scout Troop Two-Ninety-Eight in Nolansville, and appreciate their efforts to beautify the area.
Any questions or comments? Once it pops up. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Williams? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven, twenty-five, twenty-eight was pulled. Resolution seven, twenty-five, twenty-nine. Resolution authorizing Williamson County, Tennessee to approve the opioid litigation settlement agreements. And a proper motion is made by Commissioner Drew Torres and seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Public Health Committee did not meet. Budget Committee was four, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Herbert.
This just gives for us to approve the settlement of the opioid litigation funds, as you stated.
Any questions or comments? Question or comment from Commissioner Drew Torres?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is this the final, was this the final settlements that we're waiting to bring all of this to conclusion?
No. These are... An announcement last week of another nine hundred and eighty million dollar settlement, I believe, which will be coming to you in September for approval. So, they'll, they'll continue to, to drizzle in as we go, but this is the big one.
The big ones are, are in. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven, twenty-five, thirty. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a lease agreement for real property located at one hundred and eighteen Battle Avenue. Proper motion made by Commissioner Mary Smith and seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. The Property Committee was five, four, zero against. Just confirming?
I believe so.
Okay, five, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Hayes.
So, this is a property that obtained possession of the property Williamson County did, that is, and it was purchased on Old Battle Ground, Academy Park. At the time, it was owned by the Beards, and at this point, we're just executing a lease agreement for the property to, sorry, it's been a long day. So, Mr. Mrs. Beard wants to continue to lease the real property on one eighteen Battle Avenue, so that's really what we're approving, is the lease agreement.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Williams? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution seven, twenty-five, thirty-one. Resolution accepting the donation of a historical statue of Benjamin Franklin from Miss Pam Lewis. Proper motion made by Commissioner Drew Torres and seconded by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon. Property Committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Hayes.
And pretty much as you stated, Miss Pam Lewis has a longtime resident of Tennessee, involved in the music industry, has donated this beautiful eight-hundred-pound bronze statue of Benjamin Franklin, and it will, he's, he'll be sitting on a bench in front of the county, wait a minute.
Archives.
Thank you. So, that's pretty much it.
Any questions or comments? On a, on a bench, you can, I guess, sit next to him and have your picture made. So, and we thank Miss Pam Lewis for this generous donation. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby. Twenty-one yes, zero no. Resolution passes. Final resolution for the evening, resolution seven, twenty-five, thirty-two. Resolution increasing the Williamson County mineral service tax for sand, gravel, sandstone, chert, and limestone. Proper motion made by Commissioner Barb Sturgeon and seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. A tax study committee was three-four zero against. Budget Committee was four-four zero against. Explanation please, Commissioner Herbert.
This authorizes the county to raise the tax that was fifteen cents to twenty cents per ton for sand, gravel, sandstone, limestone from the ground in the county.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed or no? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote. As always, we want to thank the sheriff and the sheriff's deputies for being here tonight. Thank you for your service, as well as all department heads that stayed up with us. Thank you, guys. Is there any other business to come before this board? We are adjourned.